Good.
Yep.
All right. Pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, I forgot about it. All right. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from last month? Is there any questions or corrections?
July into August.
July into August?
Yeah.
We approve them at the same time or separately?
You do.
If not, I'll take a motion to approve both July and August minutes.
I make a motion.
Motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by Greg Conner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Public comment? Brandon, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. I know what I'm about to say may ruffle some feathers, but I feel I need to get it off my chest. Concerning the other night at the zoning hearing board, I was very disappointed in the actions of Mrs. Stiles. For the record, there was absolutely no public disapproval for the situation that was being discussed. No public or health or safety risk, and it seemed like the other two members of the zoning board were already set to vote within the first 10 minutes to grant the variance. That is until they were stopped and delayed, and due to the dragging out of the meeting by Mrs. Stiles, the other two members compromised with her just to end the meeting. In my opinion, there was no legitimate reason for the exceptionally long delay of the meeting due to repetitive gratuitous questioning and the unnecessary call for an executive meeting that lasted over 20 minutes to discuss what? To make a decision whether a man can leave his driveway stone the way it's been for over 50-plus years, or because of our unconstitutional orders to this, he must spend upwards of five-figure amount to have it paved? Now, I realize these are mostly my opinions, but I would like to get to the second point here, that appears that it may have been unlawful for Mrs. Stiles to have been appointed in the first place due to the fact that she's registered as a local judge of elections. I confirm that she still registered with him as that this past Tuesday when I called the election office. I refer to what is commonly known as the Pennsylvania Election Code, PA Hamphett Law of 1937, PL 11333, number 320, Article 4, Section 402. It states clearly enough, and here I got a copy here, to submit. No person shall be qualified to serve as an election officer who shall hold or shall hold within two months of half-held any office, appointment, or employment in or under the government of the United States, or of this state, or of any city, or of any county or poor district, of any municipal board, commission, or trust in any city, save only district justices, notaries public, and persons in the militia service of the state. Nor shall any election officer be eligible to hold any civil office voted for at the primary or election at which he shall serve, except that of an election officer. As a voting citizen of this borough, I call for the immediate termination of Tina Stiles from the zoning hearing board, and I also further would ask that any proceedings or rulings of Tina Stiles during her unlawful tenure as an appointee to the Seven Valleys zoning hearing board be rejected and new lawful hearing be held. I now return the floor at this time and look forward to the appropriate response of the Seven Valleys Borough Council. Thank you for allowing me to speak my mind.
Thank you, Brandon.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Engineers report?
Couple things. First, for the Church Street curb sidewalk project, we do have a change order, number one, in the amount of $1,320. And that's for a new inlet and a riser that they had to put on out at Maple Street in order to get the proper grade for drainage. So I'll need a motion to approve that.
And that work is done?
Yes.
And that's the complete change order on that?
Yes.
Okay. Questions on the change order?
You say that, anyone is done? The one that...
On Maple?
On Maple.
This is the change order for Maple Street out there?
So, to sum straight on this agenda, so we're on a Church Street curb sidewalk project?
Correct.
And then we're talking about Maple Street?
Correct, because that's part of that contract.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's all in one contract. Restudios, don't know that. Because if you remember, the funding for that is co-mingled between ARPA money as well as block grant money, so it was all bid as one project.
Questions on the change order? Motions on the change order?
Has it been recommended for approval by the engineer?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to move forward with approving change order number one.
Motion by Bill. Second by Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, then we have a application for payment number two. The original contract was $212,551, but that change order brings it up to $213,871. Work completed and/or stored to date is $191,655, with the retainage of $19,165, as well as the previous payment of $25,642.80. The current payment due under application for payment number two is $146,846.70.
So, that change order...
It is reflected on there, yes.
And payment number two is a progress payment, correct?
Yes.
And again, this has been recommended for approval by the engineer reviewing the project.
Correct, yes.
Everybody understand?
I make the motion to move forward with progress payment number two.
Motion by Bill.
Second.
Second by Greg Conner. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Next item is just informational at this point. It's a letter that was mailed out to all the property owners on Church Street between Main and Park Street. Regarding the mailbox, it's just a reminder that, you know, when they install them, that they have to watch those clearances. Now, we, under the ADA law, the minimum clearance is 36 inches. I've been informed by the engineer that PennDOT, under their highway occupancy permit, requires a minimum clearance of 48 inches. So, it's not that they not necessarily won't be able to put them up, but they're going to have to take a look at those areas where they can either get around, or they may have to, you know, cluster some of them and do a bump out or something. So, I did send that out today, so I anticipate I'll get some calls and I'll meet with folks down there on site. So, but no action required on that.
Anybody else have anything on Church Street?
I'm kind of surprised they didn't start doing the restoration of the road up at Park Street. That's very dangerous right there on Park Street. This other day, all the cones were ran over there, and it's a big cutout. It's out pretty far. It's deep if you get off the road. Are you coming out of Park Street any?
Yeah, there's a lot of things that they've done through this project that just did not make sense.
Yeah, somebody told me, they said if they run off the road, you run in that ditch, you'd be towed out.
It's bad. I seen that today. I came down that way, and I thought, it looked like, I didn't remember it being a cut that far out at first, but maybe it was. Not sure.
Yeah, I think it was cut out pretty far, because it's like that Mason, too.
When they started the concrete work up there, and then he did, went halfway down, he started doing the restoration work along the road, instead of starting back up at the top.
Yeah, I don't know why. It's a good question.
Yeah. That's like the most dangerous part of the whole project, is right there at Park Street for drivers on Church Street, for sure.
Yeah.
South Street?
Yes. South Street, yeah. South Street, anything we have on that? This is a change order, but it's a no-cost change order. It's a net zero. What it is, if you remember, they were going to do base repair different places, you know, throughout South Road. And after they got out there and they met with the contractor and looked at it a little closer, there were some areas that the engineer just didn't feel that even where they didn't need the base repair, that it just wasn't quite strong enough. So, they went back and worked with the contractor, and they ended up putting a two-inch overlay, kind of helped take out some of the bumps and dips and level all that out. So, it is a much smoother ride than what it was. And Russell Standard will now be coming back in. They're going to shoot for tomorrow, but I don't know what the weather, if that'll change, but next week at the latest is they'll come in and they'll do their double application of the calibrated chipping, and on top of that, so. So that's what the change order is for, to go from the base repair to a full...
From the spots?
Yeah.
Just dig it out, okay.
Instead of doing that, just did the full overlay. And again, that's no change in price, but we will need a motion and approval to...
Accept it.
Accept it.
Motion by Greg Bonas to accept the change order. Second by Deb. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Anything else for the engineer? From the engineer?
No, that's everything.
Okay. Solicitor's report?
Nothing new on the mediation, and I don't believe we have any update, should I state, please, correct?
No, likely next month.
Probably next month, okay. So, I have, unless anybody has any questions for me?
Yes.
I have a question on the opening public comment. On, are we doing something quote-unquote illegal?
Well, I'm not sure about the election code. I do know that the municipality's planning code does state that any member of the zoning hearing board may not hold any other elective or appointive office within the municipality. I was unaware that Cheryl held that position as judge of elections.
Tina.
Tina, I'm sorry. So...
And the only reason I'm making this statement, somebody wanted me to take their place on the zoning hearing board, and I talked to Todd, and Todd said, I couldn't do it because I was on council, so I can't do it. So, that's what made me think it probably applies to her, too.
Yeah, it's very...
You read the motion.
It's possible.
Is it?
Okay.
I mean, it's, I know I had, the only time that I've had a situation come up before was whether or not a member of a school board could serve on the zoning hearing board, and the answer was yes, because the school board was a different entity. So, to me, it does, I'd have to look at the case law to be sure, but it does look to be a conflict on its face.
Okay. And that's something you can look into here for us directly? Is there any other meeting scheduled between now and then? Between now and our next schedule?
Well, we have that continuance, and I'll talk about that later, but I haven't gotten anything from him, so I'm running out of time for advertising, whatever, so it won't be this month.
Okay. Any other questions from the solicitor?
The only other thing to follow up on Brandon's comments was about, you know, for that case to be reheard, you know, that quasi-judicial function took place. I don't know that that can be done or not.
What's that?
It's a danger of approval.
No, he was requesting that if Tina can't serve on the zoning hearing board, that that case be reheard.
What was the vote? Was it three to nothing?
The vote was three to nothing, so it was not a split vote.
No. Then there's no, there's nothing to be reheard. The issue with the executive session, that is something a zoning hearing board is permitted to do. Okay.
Okay.
I know you have very strong feelings about zoning law.
I think very much so.
Well, not arguing with you on that part, but, I mean, yeah, but I can look into this. Like I say, the statute, I was not familiar with the election code, but the zoning, or the municipality's planning code clearly does state, a zoning hearing board member can hold no other elective or appointive office within the municipality. It would appear to me, I believe the judge of elections is an elected office in the municipality, because it is, it's one of those things, judge of elections, minority and majority inspector, as I recall, are elected, and it is coterminous with the borough. So, I'll see if there's any case law on it. A lot of times, things like this, you don't get reported cases when things happen, but I'll check and let you know if I have any other information by next month.
Thank you. All right. Zoning and code enforcement?
I don't have anything other than what, you know, is on the report there. I will tell you that I did get requests for applications for demolition permits for the structures across the road. Their goal is to have them down by the end of the year, including the one that's over here in North Goodores Township. I don't know if everyone's aware, but McCrews did purchase the far-left property as well with the brick structure.
Okay.
So, they own all of that across the road now.
Isn't that supposedly, I think that's supposedly the oldest house in Seven Valleys, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I've heard that, yeah. I've heard that.
Yeah, I've heard that's always been the oldest house in Seven Valleys.
But I also heard, I know there's Ruth Abel yet, but the blue house there next to the railroad tracks, I had always heard that was the oldest one, so, yeah, so I don't know.
Well, I have to make a comment, Todd, that this sheet looks like it's three pages, but it looks like it's going to be reduced to one page next month with all the closed items and all the work that you've done. I think you've done a good job keeping after this.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Anything else on the report?
Anything, just quickly mention zoning hearing board decisions. I think we already heard this, but 71 Main Street, which was for the variance for paving, which is required in the ordinance, going from two-family to four-family. The motion was that it was granted with the exception that the driveway from Main Street into the property line, because that's over on, partially on 77 Main Street where milers lived, that section has to be paved, but once you get on 71's full property, that can remain stone. And then 3537, that was heard at the planning commission. Planning commission recommended to the zoning hearing board that that be, application be denied. Two days later, got an email from their attorney stating that they were requesting a continuance, which the zoning hearing board did, you know, grant at their hearing. So, I'm waiting to see what they're going to submit. I haven't seen anything yet, so.
Okay.
That's it.
Anything else for zoning codes? All right. Fire company, Doug, anything?
Nothing. I don't know of any fire company that I know of.
Okay. Anybody else? Nothing from fire company. Okay. Parks and Rec.
Yes, I submitted an electronic copy to Todd earlier today. The regional Parks and Recreation Commission reported its renovation, the update of the YMCA is moving along. Walls are forming. Doors are scheduled to be hung in three weeks. Project is on schedule for substantial completion, slated for the end of January occupancy, projected for February, early March. Before and after care is transitioned to Spring Grove Elementary smoothly for the start of the school year. The summer social at Farmers Field, Paradise Township, is scheduled for September 12th. Pumpkin Trail, scheduled for October 11th from 3:00 to 8:00. Little Creek Park. Spring Grove Intermediate School would be the weather backup for that. The pop-up Storytime Craft and Nature Walk event that was held at Church Street. Parking Pavilion in Seven Valleys on August 8th went well. The director reported to me that there was four kiddos that were new to the program that attended, and she was very pleased that the word is getting out. New event in the planning stages is next year on July 3rd. They're looking at generating a firecracker 5K to be held on the trail in Seven Valleys, tentatively leaving the pavilion. This will be in conjunction with celebrating the 250 years of America. Playground update, there will be a committee meeting that's scheduled for October 1st at 3:00 PM. In this space, we would be meeting for this, with a second playground vendor, working towards a drawing that will lead us towards applying for grants in 2026. Next meeting is scheduled next Tuesday, the 9th, at 5:30 at Spring Grove Elementary School District Technology Center. The space rejoins the new YMCA space. A tour of the current state of the renovation will take place at 4:45 for the board members.
All right. Anything else for Parks and Rec? Any questions? Thank you. Unfinished business?
I did receive an update on the Last Mile Pilot Project from the York County Economic Alliance. The county has entered into an agreement with a company called Talky Communications that's going to build the Last Mile Networks in the four boroughs. The previous agreement they had with Lit Communications was ended due to an ownership change with the company. And this Talky Communications is based out of Chestertown, Maryland. They currently serve about 100,000 households across Maryland. It says also, including just south of York County. And just goes on to say that Talky will be reaching out to municipalities to discuss local coordination, and that they intend to initiate the project in earnest in the coming weeks. So, we've heard that before.
They've heard that, we've heard that before.
Hopefully, it comes to be this time, so.
Yeah, I mean, we like to try to have a free, like, meeting like we did the last time, if we can, if possible.
All right. Recycling?
Um, yeah.
Okay. So, changes to the bid specs. I think everybody had a chance to look at them. Todd came up with some other edits we want to do. Then recycling there where it says by the property owner, that should be struck out because the containers will be supplied by the contractor. I guess we do not have any public bulk containers anymore, correct? So, we can get rid of that?
It's correct, we do not.
No, it's not just refuse.
And, okay. We don't have any.
Didn't work.
Okay.
And again, we're anticipating the bidders are going to require the use of the toters, either 96 or 32 gallons, so we want to have those for both trash and recycling. Couple other edits, just to do that, it is mowers instead of moors. Spell, I'll blame spell checker for that one, under large items. We'll make those changes and add recycling in. One thing, though, that I do want to go to, and Todd, you want the dates changed as far as when the bids are brought in?
Yeah, and any reason I suggest that, so we have time to, for you to review them prior to the meeting?
Okay. So, what I'll do is I'll make the changes with Todd's edits. We'll have those for final review next month and authorize advertisement for bids at the November meeting. Now, let's talk about how we want to do the bidding. Again, I changed it from what we had from last year. We're still going to do the one-year, three-year, or five-year option. What we were looking for before in every one of our bids was a flat rate for the entire period of the contract. They want to give us one bid for 12 months, one bid for 36 months. It would mean that from January 1st, 2026, through December 31st, 2028, it'd be the same price. We had some pushback to that, where some of the bidders wanted to give us the option of a different price, but have some escalation during the contract period. That's what happened in Red Lion, and we ran into a little bit of a conundrum that one of the bidders for five years was the low bidder, one of the bidders for three years with the option was a low bidder. We can do it that way, but we have to be very careful then to determine who the lower bidder is based on what contract you want to take. And just to give you an idea of what you're looking at, the bids that came in for Red Lion, and I forget what you guys are paying now, our low bidder was a company called Anthracite Waste, which is up north. Todd, I don't know if you're familiar with it or not. I never heard of them till last month.
Yeah, I know they're starting...
They're starting to come down here.
Coming to York County.
They, Penn Waste was low bid on three years, Anthracite was low bid on five. So, they ended up going with Anthracite, and their bid, the price for the 96 gallon for the first year was $378, and it went up to $414 in the fifth year for the little container. And this is where you, you know, for three times as much garbage, you're paying $378 versus $336 for the 32 gallon, up to $348. So, that's what we were looking at in terms of the yearly bids that Red Lion got with the amount of people they have. So, it gives you an idea of what you're going to be looking at. So, I guess my question is, do we want to put this out for bid and get a flat rate for the full term? Or do you want me to set it up so that they can have an option for both the 32 and the 26-gallon containers to have a flexible, change it during the contract as the years go on? Or do we want to look at a flat rate for the full term, which we've done in the past? And I'll ask Todd for his opinion, too, since he deals with other municipalities as well.
I mean, you say a flat rate, you mean all customers pay the same?
Yeah, and no, but we know the full time. In other words, if, and you're going to get a, for that, for the, let's say, the five years, you would get a yearly amount that starts in January 26th, would be the full amount, the whole way through until December 2023. No escalation during the contract period unless you have a tipping fee increase, which is built into the contract.
Right, right.
I mean, like I said, the...
Which is what I think you had last time.
The ones, yeah, that's what we've always done before. The one that Red Lion did, like I say, they allowed them to put in their bids as to what the changes would be, and some changed it, like, just for example, Anthracite kept theirs the same the second and third year. Penn Waste increased theirs from 384 to 407. It just created a lot more possibilities.
Yeah, so, so Red Lion, just as I understand, they went with Anthracite...
Correct.
...for five years. Now, must every customer have the same size toter? Do they have it broken down?
96 or 32.
Okay.
Those are the two options. And unlimited recycling containers, yeah, same as with one.
When Anthracite bid on that, and you never heard of them before, was there a concern of checking references out?
There was some background done. Apparently, they've also just gotten Penn Township, from what I understand. That was brought up at the meeting. But again, we had, we had, we had four people ask for packages. One was called ESC Goods. Anthracite, Penn Waste, Republic got a package but didn't make a bid, which, again, from what I'm understanding, Republic is not bidding on municipalities that they don't have. They're trying to just keep what they've got. Again, that's what I heard, may or may not be what you've heard.
Is there an option to bid it both, or to bid it both ways? Or is it, you know, put it, if they want to do flat rate, or if they want to bid it as per-year fee, where it's both in there, I mean, then, you know, I don't know if it would make sense, I don't know if it would be any different. I mean, I would think, I would think the flat rate fee would be similar to average help, the same amount of years that they do per year.
Well, the argument, the argument in favor of, I mean, and I've heard it both ways. We've heard, and typically, Republic is the one that has issues with it, but they were saying that we've got to make too many guesses as far as what to bill, since it's five years out. But the other side of the coin is, you've got a, you've got a customer that you know you're going to have for five years. So, again, I, both sides, dealt with both sides of it. From a legal point of view, it's a lot easier to tell who the low bidder is when you are comparing apples to apple.
I mean, my, my experience with the contracts that I've dealt with is typically, the ones we, we've had, is it's actually, at minimum, it's a three-year contract. And then year four and year five are bid, they provide us with a bid price, but that's just with the option to extend year four and year five. But it's one where you have to mutually agree upon it.
Well, we've done that in the past, too, where we've given them the option to extend for, you know, a year, up to two more years, year-by-year basis. I know we've done that before, too.
Well, here's the problem with mutual agreement. Mutual agreement basically means both sides have to agree, you almost have to say this is a new contract. This is where we ran into a little bit of an issue with three-year bid versus a five-year bid. You know, is the, are we really saying if we're accepting Anthracite based on the fact that they're the low bidder on five years, well, we better make sure we accept the contracts? And they, because otherwise, you can make an argument that you only really had a three-year contract, which was not the low bid. And again, what we've talked about before is always the lowest responsible bidder. I know people who have Penn Waste bitch about Penn Waste, people who have Republic bitch about Republic. It's the nature of the beast. But if you have your list that says consistently, certain streets were not picked up, consistently, this house wasn't picked up, or somebody's... this house wasn't picked up, or somebody's, they ran into the side of the house or the barn and knocked over a sign. If you have your list to justify not going with the lowest price bidder, you can say they're not responsible because of their failure to respond to complaints and deal with problems. Again, to my knowledge, we do not have that list anywhere here, which would be held against our low bidder if Penn Waste would be the low bid.
Yeah, I mean, I'm guessing, well, I mean, has the penalty process helped you out at all in the township with the least?
Yeah.
Or just any, any, I guess, any contract.
It helped out a lot, yeah.
Any contract at all. And I think that could be our benefit. I mean, we've always had it in place, but we've never really enforced it, thinking.
Well, I think the main question right now is how do we want to look at the bids? Is do we want to look at the bids on a, a flat fee from, from the beginning to the end? Or do we want to let them step them up?
I.
And that gets the main question. And then getting into how we're going to deal with, with getting them to pick up the trash here and there and keeping a list, that's a different subject.
I mean, my, my sense would say it's going to, it's going to be similar cost no matter which way you, no matter which way they would bid it.
So.
Over, over the length of the contract.
Mike and Todd, have you ever seen this? Now, my, my three-year contracts, I deal with, with large cans. So this past time, the first year, and we bid it three years. The first year was less than the last year of the last contract. Second year was even. And then the third year was 3% raised from the present one. And that was a three-year contract. I'm, I'm, I'm a little skeptic of going five years when we know that if, if we can maintain a three-year cycle and stay within 3%, I, I feel that we can have more control over a three-year than, than a five-year.
What, what if, Mike, could we do it that we, they, they provide a, a flat rate for the year for a 96 and a 32 for year one, year two, year three? They spell out each of those five years, but write it in the contract that you could award it as a one-year, a three-year, or a five-year? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, well, what we can do is we can, we can take what we have now. The way, the way the specs have been changed to reflect containers, we're asking them to give us a bid for the, for the one-year, the three-year, or the five-year, what it's going to be for the 96 and the 32. Now, we could take this and we could put up here, 2026, say 7, 2029, 30, and have them give us a, a price if in fact we would want, they would want to do a slight escalation. For example, again, Red Lion, for the Penn Waste bid for the 32 gallon container, it stayed the same for three years, 336 apiece. And then it went up to 348 for the last two. Now Anthracite went up a little bit every year, 378, 390, 399, 408, 414. That's what you would be looking at. And you know, we'd, we'd have to really sit down, do the mathematics to figure out who the low bidder is depending on which bid you'd want to take. Not saying it can't be done, not saying it would not be good to do it that way. But, so we could, we could do an option where they give us a flat rate for five years, or, or any of the one, three, or five with a flat rate for every year of the contract. Or we could put an option to say, we'll let you do a change every year of the, of the contract regardless of which one you do. That's totally up to council as to what you think's in the best interest of the borough.
That's Anthracite, that stayed the same for the 32 gallon.
Okay, okay.
Comments from council?
It doesn't hurt to ask for different options. I mean, you can always say no. I know one of my other municipalities, I think, has made the decision that when their current contract runs out, they're going to let everybody else deal with their own trash, either through private collection contracts or, it's rural, so you can burn more than what you can do here.
I, I, I think you're, I think you're, I think you have the, the best chance to get better pricing is if you break out each of those individual years. I guess you'd have to write in there that, you know, how you're going to award it, whether it be the one-year, three-year, or five-year.
Well, what we do is we keep what we have now.
I got you.
And basically we have three-year options on a flat rate for each of the years of the term regardless of whether you're talking one, three, or five. Or an option where we break it down by year that would show probably a slight increase, a lower price at first with a higher price later on. And again, well, we can do that, have that proposal to everybody to look at prior to the next meeting, you can make a final decision, and, and we can get the bids out. I'm trying, I'm trying to remember, I'm trying to remember, Greg, I remember you, you were the one that had the most concern. The reason that we went with the short bid after, for the one before was for that reason, if I recall, because they wanted the option to make, make an adjustment in the bidding after certain years. So that was one of the reasons we went with the short term the last time.
I think it as well was because for the five-year, from 2023 to 2027, it was 432 every year as opposed to 384. It didn't jump up. It was, if you're going to do it flat for five years, it's going to be a higher amount. Yeah. Yeah, because your one-year was 384 per household, your three-year was 384 per year per household, and your five-year was 432 per year per household. And that didn't count for tipping fees to take that up. That was your base price.
So, I think Brandon.
Can I just maybe ask a question? I know I brought this up a few years ago after the contract was signed, so nothing a whole lot could be done by that, but you made a point that reminded me of it. Why can't the, just asking, why can't the option for the citizen decide, you know, private contract between them, it who they want? To me, it allows for more competition and ability. I, I get the idea of contracts on a business. I get that you get better prices in group contracts, but at the same time, it gives the freedom to those who use more, to pay more what they use, and those who use less to maybe pay less of what they use. I know, and I believe Mr. Landis had mentioned at the time as well, that we barely use any trash, but we're paying as much as the one that is using trash. It's just a question, is that option a possibility in reality, not that this is whatever was considered by the board? Or is that a possibility for municipality or boroughs to choose?
Well, I'll just give you some general. The general experience is if you do it that way, where everybody has, has their own hauler, you want, want a mandate that they have a hauler.
I understand that.
Otherwise, you end up getting, your neighbor doesn't have a hauler, you don't want him getting trash piled up and you have to follow those.
Or you use one hauler. I get that too.
Which then means you need somebody to keep track to make sure that everybody has a hauler.
You would have more, you would have more administrative problems making sure that everybody has a hauler. That's, that's the, that's the downside to it. The upside to it would be that, you know, you may have a little bit better competition between, because you would have some individual trash haulers who would be licensed to do it individually, that would never bid on a municipal project because of bonding requirements and everything else. You know, if you have, if you have John Smith who has his own Packer and he's licensed by the state, you could hire him. But he would say, oh, I'll never, I'll never bid on a municipal job because I can't handle a whole municipality. And he could maybe give it to you cheaper. But we also have to remember something as well. As the municipality, we are obligated to require that every hauler that comes into the municipality hauls to the York County incinerator. That's something that's been.
Where it goes.
Well, you don't, but we by law, we have to, we have to make sure it all goes to York County. Refuge Recycler, or whatever they call that place up there.
Which adds more administration.
I don't think it's that expensive. But that's my point of being, where I think this would help, you know, the individual has the freedom to get who they need. I completely appreciate the necessary issue of needing to have it taken away completely. I'm not arguing that fact. I was just putting out there for the freedom of the individuals to choose, to pay for only what they need supposedly. That's how I'm presenting it.
I, and again, this is just from my experience. I have two people that work in the office with me that are in municipalities where they contract their own, and they pay more than what our residents are paying under a contract.
But is that per the size? That's my point. I mean, they're paying for what they use, correct?
Well, 96 gallon toter is what they both have.
But I'm not, it will take me over a month to fill that, is my point.
I guess what he's saying is a, the collector may say, this is what you have to use. You don't have any other choice.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't, and again, I, I don't know, but I would think if you have a 96 gallon toter, he doesn't care if you put, you know, a third, if you fill it a third or if you fill it full, he's going to charge you the same price because he doesn't know if you're going to fill it full.
That's my problem. Now, you're paying for 96.
But that would be the option with the 32 gallon.
But that's the other, what I'm saying.
Now, it's going to be the second question officially, is that an idea of a cheaper option for the?
Yeah, that, that would be cheaper.
But see, one of the things that, right or wrong, we're seeing because of the automation of the trucks, paper bag is gone.
I think so.
And I, yeah, I know. But, but that's, that's the cheapest way to do it. You buy, you buy the bags from Penn.
I understand that, sir, but I could argue the fact again, I will not fill a 96 for one month and I can take it to the incinerator for $28, so.
That's why he was saying the bag. He didn't say a toter.
All right, let's go back to the bid specs, please.
I've got a question on that.
It's a good point.
When we bid a contract, is each individual going to have the option to get a 36 or 90?
A 32 or 96 gallon.
96 or 32.
Whatever they need.
Whether the contract is for each individual household can pick which one serves their purpose.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Right. Yeah, and again, that's to, to recognize low volume users.
For sure.
Mike, can you answer a question?
One.
When you put those bids out, do you tell them how many households there are?
Approximately 214.
It's in the specs, it's, it's in the specifications, we're saying how many, so they know approximately what they're getting into. Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Can I ask you something, Mike? Kind of my daughter and them, they live in West Manchester Township. And two years ago, Penn Waste came and gave them all brand-new toters for the trash and new toters for the, the recycling.
Recycling, yes.
Because the toter that they have, they gave to me, so that's where my trash goes.
And that's the way this would work. They would bring them here.
That would be the same way, they would give you the toters.
The, the device, the, the container is the property of the contractor. They will provide it. If something happens and it gets beaten up, they will come, they will take it and give you another one.
Conceivably.
Yeah, well, they're supposed to, especially if, if it gets damaged by their truck lifting it and putting it in, you know.
And you can.
So how does council want to see the bids?
How much is three-year flat?
Comments on?
Seems to be the.
Yeah, I think three-year.
Three-years, yeah.
That's my bet. I've had experiences with.
So, so what, what I'm hearing is that you want to only go with a, with one option, and that would be for a three-year term with a flat rate for the full three years for each of the 96 or 32 option?
Well, I mean, could, could we just leave the flat rate for all options, but we, I mean, most likely.
And then you can pick what you want.
Yeah, and pick then we can go from there what we want. I mean, it gives us the more options unless you think, giving them one option, it doesn't really give them any lead weight in bid different ways.
Right, but, and I'm, and I want to understand this too, is council wants to see them, if it starts at a hundred dollars, if it starts at $400 a month, you want it to end at $400 a month? You don't want it.
Contract terms would, it sounds like.
I got that, I got it.
Okay.
Yep. Flat amount per year.
One, three, and five.
Yes.
So basically, we keep it the way it is.
So what we did last time.
Okay.
Okay. With the changes, with the changes to the specifications as edited, again, you will have, and again, you will have the final version to make a final decision on for the next meeting.
I, I would like to have you take a look at one minor change to the specification, as far as the collection shall be between the hours of. So most of the summer and including this week on a short week. The collection was 5:00 or shortly after 5:00 AM. We have 6:00 AM here. I, I say we change it to 5:00 AM, and then we don't have to have any fussle about anybody making noise prior to 6:00 AM.
And they start early when it's really hot.
Sure.
Well, it's a holiday on one day, they had to make up the whole week.
Well, that's, that's one of the reasons that I put in there, between 6:00 AM and 6:00 PM, unless changed due to anticipated excessive heat or other inclement weather. Because we had.
Holidays.
We had situations with Penn Waste saying that they wanted to start early, those few days that it was anticipated to be very hot.
So let's just make it 5:00 AM and be done.
Okay. The residents of the borough don't mind hearing the garbage trucks at 5:00 in the morning.
They did this week. All right. Anything else on refuse and recycling? All right, Todd, tenant? Tenant registration ordinance and the rental property license inspection program ordinance. I did pull several examples from other municipalities for each of those, and I did give copies to members of the ordinance committee. If council's okay, I would suggest that you utilize the ordinance committee, let them get together and bring back one draft of, of each instead of council, you know, everybody here trying to look through 10 different versions and come up with one stuff.
Just, just remember one thing, if the ordinance committee meets, it's got to be at an advertised public meeting. Because they are a committee of council, and under the Sunshine Act, they would have to hold their committee meeting at an advertised public meeting.
When it's less than a quorum.
It's a committee.
It's a committee. If it's, and if it's less, a commit, if you have three people on the committee, it is less than a quorum of council, but it is three members of the committee. And under the definition in the Sunshine Act, the committee meeting would have to be publicly advertised. If they're going to have discussion and deliberation and recommendation for council, which is what I'm hearing you say they want to do.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
Advertise public meeting with an agenda.
Yeah, I will, I'll reach out to everybody, try to get a date.
Okay.
That works for everybody.
Is that for the, the rental property?
Both of them, yep.
Okay.
Next thing here is this street light out here. I've been back and forth with Med Ed, and this is for the light we want to put on the opposite side of the road near the bridge. Currently, we have the, the 50 watt, you know, the 4,000 lumens, lumens is what we have now. The next step up is 90 watts, 7,000 lumens. And the price difference is, a month is $3.50 between the two. I thought you might want to go with the higher one, so it helps light up the bridge and even that end of the parking lot.
Especially since there's not going to be any houses over there.
Well, yeah.
Just changes the bulb, doesn't change the price of the install and the.
Correct.
The install's the same.
Yeah. That's my understanding, but I'll confirm that. Okay, so we'll go with the 90 and the 7,000. All right.
Last Mile Project, that's a repeat. Zoning hearing board vacancy.
Yeah, I just put them on there because we still have vacancies on planning commission and zoning hearing board. I haven't heard from anyone, so.
Any other unfinished business, anybody? New business? The Valley Tavern. It's on Doug.
It actually didn't come through me. So, I mean, I, I imagine, I mean, it's all the same, it looks like.
He's got it. Yeah, everything's the same. It would be October 31st at the Valley Tavern there in the parking lot, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It would be co-hosted equally with the Borough, with the Borough reimbursing up to $200 as we've done in the past. And I think it worked out to about 150 last year. And it'll include hot dogs, the, the buns, the condiments, snacks, punch, you know, all the disposables, and then they'll put up two tents with tables. and then they'll put up two tents with tables. And it'll be in the parking lot on the rail trail side. Just need, should act on that.
Questions or comments on that before any motions are made? I make a motion to move forward with accepting that offer from the Valley Tavern.
Motion by Bill.
Second.
Second by Greg Parnas. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, quick response team?
Just need authorization. In the past, we've always sent them two hundred dollars.
Budgeted for, correct?
Yes.
Motion by Greg to send the quick response team the two hundred dollars that we budgeted for. Second by Deb. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
York County SPCA, just quickly, since last meeting, the York County Municipal Administrator Managers Group has met with the SPCA, I believe, twice. It's quite a controversial issue right now, because their, their funds are running short, and currently, between all the municipalities, I believe they're collecting around two to three hundred thousand. In the two thousand twenty-six budget, they're going to be asking from all seventy-two municipalities combined for eight hundred and forty thousand. So, we have not gotten the contract yet for twenty-six, but it's supposed to be coming out in September. So, I don't know what that number will be, but there's a lot of unhappy municipalities. And what they're unhappy about is the, the personnel payroll, I'm going off of memory here, went from one point three million in two thousand twenty to two point seven million in twenty-four. And the top five executives, including the director and so forth, their, their pay increases over four years. The directors went up sixty-seven percent from a hundred and nineteen thousand in two thousand twenty, to last year was a hundred and ninety-nine thousand. And.
No, that's not just their salary. That, that's, that's included all the, the benefits and.
No.
That's their salary. Gotcha.
So that's why a lot of municipalities are really upset right now and not happy about it. So, anyway, we'll be hearing more about that, and we'll, should be getting that contract. I should have that for you next month.
I did hear from that meeting as well, they're reversing their stance on individual turn-ins at the beginning of the year.
Correct.
So they're at least doing that now.
Yeah, because they had stopped, uh, June, July first of last year, they stopped that residents could not bring and drop off strays. They stopped that. You may have seen the article about Adams County, whatever. So, they did indicate that they are going to be reversing that, because they got a lot of backlash on that as well.
I wouldn't be surprised, though, if they mimic Adams, and you're required to show a driver's license.
They're claiming at this point in time they're not, but we'll see.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I just want to let you know to, might be some sticker shock coming.
All right, treasurer's report. Any?
I don't have.
Anybody have any questions on treasurer's report?
Do you know when?
Go ahead, you're good.
When are they doing the lettering on the building, you know?
I have the lettering for the windows, and it's continental signs that we have ordered. I don't know when they're going to install for the wall, so that is ordered.
The payment's basically for the order of the letters and all that.
That was just for the vinyl lettering on the window. Oh, and I did put a deposit down.
Okay, that's what I.
Yeah, for continental signs, that was the deposit.
Okay.
Yes.
That's, that's the one I kind of, I figured, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
If not, I will take a motion to approve, accept, and file a statement for audit and for the treasurer to pay any regular bills before the next scheduled meeting.
So, move.
Motion by Bill.
Second.
Second by Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any other new business? Okay, secretaries report.
Um, just real quick, PSAB Fall Conference, is Doug, are you the one that's going? Have you heard from anyone else? I have not.
I have not heard from anybody. I did make a hotel reservation, just so I had it just in case. If nobody plans one, I do plan on wanting, and I will take care of the registration on my own, and go from there. So, yep, last offer going, boom, gone, all right.
Gone. Uh, next two items, just, I need to know by September twenty-first, if you let me know a couple days earlier. The York County Birds Association, their quarterly dinner meeting will be held September twenty-fifth at the John Wright Restaurant. And then also, I guess, in preparation of their annual meeting in November, I'm going to look back through the records, but if anyone knows that they're eligible for ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, let me know. But I'll look back through the records and verify that, so.
The September meeting represents from York County Cert, so what we just donated to are going to be there, as well as a gentlemanal presentation with the York County Fire Police. Just how many municipalities can all work together? The annual banquet, November, it's Saturday, November twenty-sixth, or it is going to be at Harry Hills this year, so it's about a week later than normal, but, so different place, you know, a little closer to the borough. It's always a good time. I, you know, anybody, I appreciate anybody that would like to come, because yes, I will be there. Yes, sir.
Okay. Leans stays the same. Uh, the report, sewer report?
It is an interesting report this month. Not a lot of activity. If you look at the revenues, I was just trying to do the math to see if the uncollected revenue is based on the quarters, and, and looking at that two hundred and thirty thousand, I think it is, but again, without a quick math, I wouldn't be able to say for sure. Looking at your, the expense report, you see the Valley Road Pump Station, they budgeted ten thousand dollars for repairs for this year, and they're already at twenty-three-three. And if you look back further, the plant operator is recommending that they completely replace the pump station. So those are things that.
Valley or Church Street?
Church Street, I'm sorry. Yeah, Church Street Pump Station, they're wanting to, to completely replace.
Just in time for two thousand and seven.
Yeah. And then also, you did see that they look, looks like they got a citation from DEP on, I think it was fecal coliform, which is surprising, that's usually a sign that there's not enough chemicals in the water. The other fecal coliform and cost, total phosphorus were up. And they also looked like they had some problems with nitrogen again, so. And that may be due to warm weather. And in my experience in Glen Rock, sometimes that pops up because of warm weather, but, you know, again, just, just things to look at. You know, obviously, they may have to make some additional monetary decisions on safe operation of the plant. And there's nothing, obviously, in their minutes about moving on with mediation of the pre-part dispute, so I'm thinking maybe it's gone by the wayside. Of course, now, of course, as I say that, it'll probably come back next month, but.
Or they'll just work it out in the twenty twenty-seven negotiations.
Yeah, we haven't worked anything out. That's all I saw in reviewing it. And yeah, this month, I actually did get it, and it didn't go in my junk file.
Okay, good.
I'll just follow up then on the LSA statewide grant application. I was able to get away from my regular third Wednesday commitment in August, and I did attend the sewer authority meeting. I did talk to them about the, the LSA grant, that's one that they've never applied for. And they did authorize me to work with Dave Davidson, the engineer, to get some budget numbers together and so forth. And from what I gathered, they haven't made a decision yet, but it sounds like they, they want to actually, of course, replace the Church Street Pump Station, but then add another one because of it just being too much of a push. So they're going to be looking at that and getting numbers together and everything. That grant's due November thirtieth, so we'll be working with them.
Cool. Any comments on the sewer meeting? Todd, you have anything else?
No.
Mike?
No.
Sam?
No.
Greg?
I just, one other thing, um, for anybody that attended, or just kind of recap any of the little technical they had throughout the day. Very well received, probably maybe estimated four to five hundred people throughout the day, you know, and, I mean, I think they're pleasantly surprised. It seems like everybody had a good time. They already have a date for next year, August twenty-second, so.
Gary?
Mark?
Greg?
Deb?
No.
Nothing.
All right. Open back up the public comment. Brandon?
Just real quick, I wasn't here last month, it sends us under unsued business. What does item C need to reference to? I don't know anything about it.
Tenant registration and property licensing. Mm-hmm. Yeah, you want your head. Well, there, there, it was brought up, the public comment about the possibility of the borough doing a tenant registration ordinance or a rental property licensing ordinance. And it was just, again, it's just been referred to committee to consider.
Okay, is that a committee open public?
Well, that's what I just mentioned earlier, when the committee meets, the committee must have an open public meeting.
Okay, so we can comment or?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, thanks, everybody. Meeting adjourned.